First item of business is reports of the city officers. I really have one comment tonight, which is a short update on the North Beach Access Road endeavor to raise some funds privately by philanthropy for the desired option, which costs a little more and then these days of carefully managed capital funds. I am pleased to report that considerable progress has been made in fundraising and we're confident of getting to the goal and even beyond it somewhat. There's a lot of paperwork flying around as I speak. So our thought is that at the first meeting in December, we would have a full and complete update on that effort. But it's an amazing and wonderful response, only in Lake Forest. Another one of Lake Forest's miracles, of people stepping up to have that much more elegant, is the phrase I say, but actually in technical engineering terms, a new entrance road that will be more secure, more stable in the long run in terms of the retention of the bluff. And in the end, I think it's going to be a wonderful project, even though it will curb our beach use somewhat next summer, or access to the beach from the north, but use of the beach will not be. The only other thing is it's never too early to mention the forthcoming tree lighting ceremony, the Friday at 5:00 of Thanksgiving. And that's always one of the biggest highlights in town and we'll talk more about that at our next meeting. And with that, I will ask Bob Kiley deliver the city manager report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Maybe I should ask our next speaker to give us some advice about fundraising because he just completed a fairly large fundraising effort for a new science center at Lake Forest College. And we're pleased to have this evening in the community spotlight, the esteemed president of Lake Forest College, Stephen Scott.
Well, thank you very much, Bob. I'm not sure if I've ever been called esteemed before, but I'll take it. Thanks a lot.
Better late than never.
It's a real pleasure to be here tonight, Mr. Mayor and members of city council, to give you just a bit of an update on Lake Forest College. And I'll take just a moment, I introduce several of you personally, but to introduce to those in the audience, Eddie Crummy, who is a first-year student from Studio City, California, who has just been appointed our student government's city liaison. So Eddie is here tonight to learn about how city council functions and will be making contact with a number of you hereafter as well. So glad to have Eddie with me, to keep me honest as I go through here. What I thought I would do is just a kind of organizing principle, is I would talk briefly about four Cs. And if you will, those are campus, curriculum, community, and Chicago. And to just jump right in on campus, I want to call to your attention, some of you, I think, have already seen this, but many of you may not have. If you go to the landing page of our website, you'll see now about a one, one and a half-minute drone video of our campus and actually a good bit of the town as well, but in particular, since you brought it up earlier, Mr. Mayor, the beach. And that drone video, if there is a more beautiful presentation of, I think, the picturesque nature of our campus in this town, I don't know what it would be. And if you'd like to take advantage of the drone video, I'm happy to sell it to you as well. But it actually goes very, very well and it really shows the beach to very, very good fashion and I think really presents a lovely image for prospective students and parents and others of the college and this town that we're so proud to be a part of. But with that as a campus, I'll just note, Bob Kiley was very kind to point out the recent opening of our Lillard Science Center with warm thanks to John and Paula Lillard and so many others who have made that project possible. But that's the latest addition of really well north of $150 million in campus improvements over the last decade or so that we've made at the college, really putting the college in very good fashion, standing up to many of our peers and competition in what is a very competitive time in higher education. And I think the way the campus shows now, thanks to the Lillard Science Center and many of the other things we've done, is really very much to our advantage and also to the towns. And there will be more to talk about in that regard in times ahead as well, so I look forward to talking about our next project when I'm back here a year from now, if I'm invited back, which I hope to be. But the other thing that I'll just say, what the drone video also points out, and you would see if you tour our campus, is the real degree to which the college has, I think, joined with the city in environmental projects, in environmental awareness, conservation activity. On our campus now, we have, as part of the landscaping around the science center, the McClure Rain Garden, which is a three-pond section. We've had ducks there already and frogs and a number of different species of natural vegetation. We have a greenhouse that is almost completed and a green roof as part of this project as well. All of those things combine to provide opportunities for environmental education that are really rare and special and I think a real part of who we are and what we emphasize now. So if I move from that actually to the second C, curriculum, the several points that I'd make there are just quickly these. Curriculum, of course, suggests what it is that we teach, and there are many, many different things that fall under that rubric, but to note just a couple of categories. We are a liberal arts college and proudly so, have been historically, and we still make sure that all of our students, all 1,500 of our students have a solid grounding in the liberal arts because we believe a sort of an article of faith, that the liberal arts really teach students how to think. We've had a series of sessions with a couple of consultants from the McKinsey Consulting Group over the last year, who have helped us think about what lies ahead in terms of artificial intelligence and the way in which artificial intelligence is going to make obsolete many jobs that we are aware of now, that we still think of as future careers. But what those McKinsey sessions have made really clear to us is if we can do one thing for our students now, to really prepare them for the future that lies ahead, it is to teach them literally how to think, how to think well. And we believe there really is no better curriculum to do that than the liberal arts that provides so many different ways of looking at the world in combination. But in addition to those traditional liberal arts subjects, we also have a number of majors that are really contemporary, career-focused, and that really helps students get prepared for what lies after college, ranging from neuroscience and biomedical education to a really thriving entrepreneurship program. Our largest major at the college now is a finance major, which most liberal arts colleges like us don't offer, but we do very successfully. On computer science, and we're just about ready to launch a new data science major as well. So in all of these ways, we're really preparing students, in addition to that liberal arts grounding, for many opportunities that lie ahead and many ways for them to contribute and have very successful lives. The internship program that we offer is really second to none in terms of small colleges in the Midwest today. A major reason for that is not only the city of Lake Forest, but the city of Chicago that we take advantage of in so many ways, and I'll get there in just a moment. Before going to Chicago, let me talk about this community and just a few of the ways in which it is so important to us and we want to say that we are contributing as well. The beach I mentioned earlier is of course a real highlight for our students coming from places like California, many don't know it exists until they get here, but once they see it, I see the jaws drop and the eyes open. And we were very fortunate last August to have Jim Preschlack there, speak to our new students on our beach bash night. And Jim helped make it a real bash night, I should say, also.
Right guy for the job.
We are, we're very connected to this community. Students like Eddie here tonight take our presence in the community very seriously, want to know more about it, want to contribute to the community. They do so in many different ways, through jobs that they take on, internships they serve locally, involvement in things like city government here as Eddie is tonight. We'll have a forum in two or three weeks on our campus with the mayor, Bob Kiley, and the city police chief, and our alderman to talk about city government with our students, help them understand how city government works here and how they can contribute. But in addition to that, we really want to serve a sort of a cultural destination for the town as well, and we try to do that in a number of different ways. I'll point out just two, in terms of things that lie immediately ahead. In two weeks, two talks on campus that may be of interest to folks tonight. On Wednesday evening, November 14th, Howard Tolman, who is the recently, he just stepped down as CEO of 1871, the entrepreneurship entity in the city, he is now connected to IIT where he's leading their entrepreneurship programs. He'll talk about the state of entrepreneurship in America and in the Chicago region in particular on Wednesday evening, November 14th. And two nights before that, on Monday evening, November 12th, if I have my dates right. Mazurin Banaji, who is a very well-known Harvard psychologist, who has really studied implicit bias and the assumptions that we all make in all kinds of ways about different people as we go through our lives, the assumptions that we operate on, many of which are false, but those implicit biases that we all have, how do they come to be? How can we understand them? How can we get rid of them? How can we work through them? That will be a topic of her Volweiler lecture on Monday evening, November 12th. Both of those will take place in the chapel on our campus, and they're just examples of the ways in which we try to contribute education, culture, other opportunities to the city, and hope that many who may be listening tonight will come and share those occasions with us. Finally, Chicago, our fourth C tonight. If there's one thing, if I had to single out one attribute that students, just generalizing broadly in America today, are looking for, students are looking for metropolitan environments. And we are incredibly fortunate to be where we are here in the city of Lake Forest, but to have the access that we have to that city just 30 miles to our south and everything that it offers. We take advantage of it in all kinds of ways, starting on the third day of new student orientation every year, when the entire first-year class of 400 students boards a train and goes down into the city with their first-year study instructors and spend the day on a series of, it's not really fair to call them scavenger hunts, but they sort of come to that in certain ways, but they're all in connection with first-year seminars that students have that are focused on one or another aspect of the city of Chicago and what it has to offer. From that day during new student orientation all through four years, our students are going back and forth regularly for recreational pursuits, for educational opportunities. Thirty of them every semester spend a semester in our residential facility in the Loop downtown, doing internships and taking courses at partner institutions in the city. We also have strong partnerships with most of the major cultural organizations in the city now, from the Chicago History Museum to the Chicago Humanities Festival that is just about ready to start. But in all those ways and many others, Chicago really is, with the town of Lake Forest, a major advantage for the college, one that we really try to push as hard as we can as we do our recruitment process and we try to take advantage of with all of our students over their four years on campus. So those are my four Cs tonight. I will stop, be happy to take questions if you'd like, but I'm also happy to sit down and shut up if that's what you'd like. Thanks.
President Scott, I had the pleasure and privilege of being at the opening of the Lillard Science Center, the public opening. It was packed, so I'm fairly sure other people here were there as well. We went upstairs, we actually heard somebody talking about what was going on upstairs and students making presentations, and we went upstairs and heard one particularly extraordinary student, and then somebody else who was doing this work came in later, and she was equally informative, talking about work that's been being done at the college, I gather for about 20 years, on Parkinson's. And it was riveting, and I know you're making the case for a liberal arts school, as well you should, I, as a graduate of a liberal arts college, I really believe in the, that's how you learn to think. But boy, was this an impressive presentation on work that's being done at a school with 1,500 students on Parkinson's and, you know, how to advance some of the science on that. And it just, it took our breath away, and I'm so glad to have a chance to tell you this publicly because it was one of my, I've had many impressive experiences at Lake Forest College, but this would probably top the list. This, I'm trying to think if they were both seniors or, there's one faculty member who's been working with students on this, so obviously there's a lot of continuity, it's they don't start over each year learning about this. And interestingly, my husband's sister has been recently diagnosed with Parkinson's, so it was particularly compelling to us, but, and we didn't actually understand the linkages between the studying of Parkinson's and Alzheimer's. Just absolutely fascinating. It looked like you might want to get in on this.
No, no, I'll just say a couple things, and thanks very much for that. I should make it clear to everyone tonight that when I refer to the liberal arts, it actually is shorthand for the liberal arts and sciences, because the sciences are absolutely part of our curriculum as well, in fact, a leading part. Forty percent of our students now are majoring in the sciences. So we are intentionally small, and the 1,500 students that Alderman just pointed out, the experience they have studying science in a facility like the Lillard Science Center at a college our size is unique and much, much different, and of course I'm biased, but much, much better than the undergraduate experience in the sciences that people can get at much larger universities. It is very direct, very relationship-based between faculty and students, and they get opportunities to do things that you only get to do as a graduate student at a larger place. The Parkinson's thing in particular is the product of Schubert Debermann, who is the chair of our biology department, he's been working on it for 20 years and has a very active lab pursuing Parkinson's disease.
And a beautiful lab.
Absolutely.
Clearly something the students and the faculty have prized. Thank you.
If Alderman Morris would help me for just a moment, I realize I didn't pass these out, but these are just takeaways on the Lillard Science Center for everyone here tonight, but just everyone on council. But thank you very much for pointing out the importance of that facility.
Thank you, Steve. It's wonderful, all the physical enhancements to the college are quite visible as you cruise down Sheridan Road and echoing in large part what's been said already, but I think the value of a liberal arts education has never been more valuable. This ever more technical world and people's needs to communicate and understand and it's an enormous benefit.
Well, I really appreciate it, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about it tonight, and I hope to see you all on campus. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve, and that completes my report for this evening.
All right. Next committee reports, Audit Committee Report Regarding Fiscal Year 2018 Annual Finance Report to be presented by Vincent Sparrow, Audit Committee Chairman, and Elizabeth Hollup, the city's finance director.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to let you know that I aspire to being esteemed someday.
Well, keep that in mind.
My mother would appreciate that. Don't ask her vote, because I'd already get it. Anyway, the committee is composed of seven members, myself, William McFadden, Dean Stever, William Smith, Ty Magnuson, Alderman Lansing, ex-officio, and the mayor, also ex-officio. In 2018, we conducted four regular meetings, one each in January, April, July, and October. We conducted only those four regular meetings. Continuing with our charge by the city council, review the financial statements of foundations associated with the city. We met with representatives of the Senior Foundation, Coria Foundation, Police Foundation, Elloa Foundation, Parks and Rec Foundation, Ragdell Foundation, and Gordon Community Center, and reviewed their financial statements, also met with their outside auditors and accountants where applicable. The committee has established a standing calendar to ensure that these reviews are conducted annually. There were no issues that came out of any of those meetings, they were all very positive. Throughout 2018, the Audit Committee has also monitored progress on seven recommendations made to the city council's finance committee to improve financial policies and procedures, including the additional agreed-upon procedures requested of the city's independent auditor related to the use of contingency funds. At our October 18th meeting, the committee reviewed a summary, actually reviewed the city's fiscal 2018 CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is really comprehensive, including the auditor's communication and report applying agreed-upon procedures. The city's independent audit firm, Baker Tilly Virchow Krause, reported no findings as a part of its financial audit. Findings related to the contingency funds were limited to instances in which the requesting department did not seek approval of contingency funds in advance of acquiring the related goods or services, a finding which had been anticipated. The fiscal year 2018 audit opinion on the city's financials was unqualified, which was what we expected. The only other comment I would make is that, consistent with their comments last year, the outside auditors did tell us what we already knew, and that is we have a wonderful finance department, that they were very professional and they were extremely well-prepared.
Thank you. Alderman Morris.
I've had a chance to work with the committee over the years, and I just want to thank Chairman Sparrow and the members of the committee for a job well done. They're very interested in the job, they pay a lot of attention to it, very attentive, and they provide a great service in terms of the financial oversight that they provide for the city and its operations, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any others?
Chairman Sparrow, I would ask you to look in your crystal ball, and with all of the energy and effort that the committee's put forward, what should be on our horizon? What should we be, have our radar up for as we look forward?
I think that collectively, we have the crystal ball out. We are looking forward to what new accounting pronouncements are coming, and I can assure you, both the auditors and the city's finance department are preparing for those, as well as anticipating what the financial impact, or at least the reporting impact, will be. Other than that, I think the greatest uncertainty with respect to the financials lies south of here in Springfield, and that, the crystal ball is pretty cloudy, so I can't help you with that.
Thanks anyway.
Sure.
Thank you. Jeb?
Just one more thing. In this report, we again got a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. So I want to thank Director Hollup and the finance staff for pulling that off again. I looked it up, there's only, well, there are 90,000 units of local government in the United States, less than 5% get this award, so that's pretty amazing, so well done.
And I believe that's 31 years in a row, or something like that? 39. Pretty impressive.
I wouldn't have thought Elizabeth was that old.
Well, thank you. Vince, back to the esteemed thing, you know, Vince has been chair of this committee for less than a year, I think, I forget exactly when this called, but so after some deliberation, it was recommended that Vince be chairman and from the caucus and so forth, and so I sent out an email to Vince Sparrow, and Vince said, "Well, just give me a call." I think this is how it went. "Just give me a call, here's my cellphone number, call me tomorrow morning," or something. So I called Vince, and he was in India, and on what I'm sure was one of those exhausting two-week business trips to Asia, and we had a short conversation, he was ready, willing, and able to serve as chair and so forth, but in the long annals of energetic, committed, engaged citizen volunteers with our city to take the time to take a call in India for a call for a higher duty was remarkable, so you are esteemed.
Thank you very much.
Next committee report is the Finance Committee with respect to the determination of a non-binding, of the annual non-binding estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2018 calendar year in accordance with the Truth in Taxation statute and establishment of a public hearing date for the 2018 tax levy, if required. Can you make this all clear, Elizabeth?
Mayor, before we go, I asked the same, we're supposed to accept the audit report, is that a vote?
Oh, I believe it's just a presentation of it.
Just says receive.
We don't have to do any more?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not legally required, although a lot of times communities will just vote to accept the audit.
Let's do that. May I have a motion to accept?
I move that we accept the audit, so the 2018 audit.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have Elizabeth Hollup, Finance Director of the City of Lake Forest.
Good evening, thank you Mayor Lansing. City council members, this is the third time already that you've discussed the 2018 tax levy, either as a city council or as a finance committee, and you will discuss it a few more times before it's finally approved. But this evening's action is primarily in regards to a statute, Truth in Taxation statute, that requires a couple of things of all taxing districts. The city council is required to determine a tax levy estimate 20 days prior to adoption of the tax levy. That is a non-binding estimate, and it can change with the provision under statute that the estimate may be increased or decreased, provided that the tax levy is not 105% of the prior year without the required notice and public hearing. So the real purpose this evening is to do a non-binding estimate, approve a non-binding estimate of the tax levy, and to determine what that public hearing date would be if required. We don't currently anticipate that it will be required, but we just want to check the box and comply with the statute. As mentioned, you discussed the tax levy initially at a September city council workshop. You've also discussed and reviewed a preliminary tax levy estimate at the October Finance Committee meeting. This evening, the city council's asked to approve a non-binding estimate of that tax levy amount and establish the hearing date if required. November 19th, at the city council meeting, will be the first reading of the tax levy ordinance. That is typically after the budget workshop, but because of the move in the budget workshop, the first reading will actually occur prior to the budget workshop on November 26th. At the November 26 Finance Committee Budget Workshop, there will be additional discussion of the proposed tax levy and how it relates to the capital budget. And then on December 3rd, at the city council meeting, would be a public hearing if required and final approval of the tax levy ordinance in order to meet statutory requirements that the adopted tax levy ordinance be filed with the county clerk by the 4th Tuesday in December. This year, however, due to the holiday, that is Friday, December 21st. So this provides a little additional detail than you received in your write-up. The Truth in Taxation statute specifies two things, an aggregate levy and a debt service levy, that was included in your write-up. This slide provides a little bit more of the buckets of the tax levy to show how that is projected to change in the estimate presented this evening. The general fund operating is projected to increase 301,000. That is in keeping with the 2.1% tax cap, so the property tax extension limitation law sets a tax cap percent each year. The city as a home role community is not bound to that, but does endeavor to try to stay within the tax cap each year. So you can see from the schedule that the operating levies, those levies that are not in red, are all kept at the 2.1% tax cap percentage or lower. The capital improvements levy follows the previous debt schedule for the 2008 redeemed bonds, so that is why you see a slight decrease in that levy this year. The three of note that have increases of more than 2.1% relate to the police pension and fire pension levies, so you can see that those estimates for police are a 4.22% increase over the prior year levy and for fire, a 6.78% increase. I would note that this levy... I would note that this levy amount is also supplemented with the public safety pension fee that was adopted two years ago. This is the second year that fee is included on homeowner utility bills, so that funding is provided in addition to the tax levy amount. Combined, those are meeting the independent actuaries, actuarial evaluation and determination of the required contribution. And then the last item is debt service. Those all relate to bonds that have previously been issued by the city, so there are bond ordinances adopted, and this just involves a scheduled increase in debt service to phase in the most recent bond issue in 2017. So you can see that that goes up about 116,000 for a 7.57% increase in that category. All told, the total levy at 32.28 million is a 3.1% increase over the prior year's extended levy, and then the projected impact on an average household of $800,000 would be $87, or a 2.64%. The reason why that percent does not agree to the total levy increase is that the average household is also impacted by the increase in total EAV. So while the total EAV in the city goes up, and so that lowers slightly the amount impacting an average household. Any questions on the estimate? So that is the last slide, so, we would just ask the city council this evening to approve this non-binding estimate of the property tax levy, and to determine that if required, December 3 would be the public hearing in the event the tax levy increase would exceed more than 5%, which is not currently projected. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. And this maybe goes to Bob Kiley, because I think it goes back to some council history. When we became a home rule city, what was said at that time about exceeding the tax cap in our levy?
Back at the time the city became home rule, I believe they also passed a resolution at that time that said that if at any time there was going to be a levy that exceeded the tax cap, that that would be put forward to a referendum. Since that time, I think two and possibly three city councils have looked at that and said, "Okay, but that didn't take into account things going on in the state in terms of lost revenue and a few other things." So, past city councils have modified that original resolution two or three times.
It's been revised both in 2008 and 2013.
Okay. To basically say, "We will effectively do our best to stay with the tax cap, however, and pensions being one, losses of state revenues being another," and I think a third was, is capital in the latest version of the draft, that said those would be reasons that this city council would determine not to go to referendum and to do what's necessary to meet the needs of the community. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does, thank you. And my second question is, the prior year, these police pensions and fire pensions were significantly higher, is that correct? And what, can, just review for everyone, for our audience, why these are so much lower this year?
Sure.
Because I would like everyone to understand some of the actions that were taken, which have modified these downward considerably.
Absolutely, Alderman Rumel. The independent actuary assesses the police and fire pension funds at the fiscal year end, so at 4/30/18, every year, we get an independent actuarial report. That report then calculates the required contribution for the following year, which then becomes that December's tax levy requirement, and then the subsequent fiscal year's budgeted contribution. For the actuarial evaluation for the year ended 4/30/17, the city council elected to make several actuarial assumption changes. The city was experiencing 8% to 9% average annual increases in police and fire pension contributions, and that was slated to continue every year until 2041, which is the state statute mandated date for funding. The Pension Subcommittee and then the City Council considered changes that would increase the initial contributions to police and fire, but would significantly bring down the arch of that incline, and would make it more manageable going forward to funding the police and fire pensions. So last year, the actuarial assumption changes for police and fire combined required an $800,000 increase in contributions to the police and fire pension funds. That is in the current fiscal year budget and was included in the 2017 tax levy. That was partially funded from an increase in the public safety pension fee, so that was doubled for the current fiscal year from $10 to $20 per quarter for residential, $35 to $70 per quarter for all other accounts, commercial, multifamily, and that is offsetting a portion of that $800,000 increase, but it did necessitate a $500,000 increase in the levy. So we had, I believe, 17% and 22% increases, those may not be right, but they were double-digit increases in both police and fire last year over the 2016 extended levy.
Yeah, you gave them to me this afternoon, I think it was 10.8% and 26.2%.
Right, 26.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just pointed out, you know, we've all gone through this, but I want everyone to understand that this total change could have been much larger, had it not been for the action that this council took to address this situation.
Very true.
And I just think we all need to keep that in mind, so, thank you for your time.
Can I add to that comment? Because we're certainly not out of the woods, because some of the return assumptions are still, to us, uncomfortably high, and if we get a strong downward type of market, we may be revisiting this funding issue again, so. We smoothed it out for future years, future councils, but we still need pretty good performance from investment markets to stay on that same track.
Indeed, it seems hardly a month goes by where we don't bring that subject back up again, and the related matters such as this tax levy, yeah. Any other questions from council? If not, is there anyone in the audience that has a question or might to make a comment on this matter? If not, I'll bring it back to council and ask for a motion to approve the estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2018 calendar year and establishment of December 3, 2018, as a public hearing date, if required, in accordance with the Truth in Taxation statute.
So moved.
This is a roll call vote. Ms. Boyler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for citizens to address council on non-agenda items. If anyone wishes to speak, seeing none, we'll go to the next item, which is the omnibus vote consideration. We have 10 items tonight. Approval of the October 15, 2018 City Council Meeting Minutes, approval of the check register for the period of September 22 to October 26, 2018, approval of health insurance contract renewals, fourth, consideration of an ordinance amending Lake Forest City Code relating to the promotion of police sergeants, five, award of contract with advanced tree care for an amount not to exceed $38,000 as part of the MPI Tree Pruning Services joint bid for fiscal year 2019, six, approval of contract with new toys, leisure products, for an amount not to exceed $50,000 for the Waveland Park Playground Expansion and Surfacing Project. A lot of kids in the neighborhood are waiting for this. Seven, consideration of an ordinance amending Section 134.05 titled Criminal Trespass to Land of the City Code as Recommended by Staff. This is a first reading and if desired, grant a final approval. Eight, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission. This is a first reading and if desired by council, can also constitute a final approval. Ninth, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board, also a first reading and if desired by council, can be final approval. And number 10, consideration of a resolution to extend the encouragement and facilitation of the replacement of lead water services to be approved by motion. Not sure what, is that a separate motion, city clerk?
You can do it all together.
Do it all together as part of the omnibus. So those are the items, and as we do each time, would an alderman like to remove any of these to be taken separately? If not, any questions or thoughts? Yes, Alderman Rumel?
I'm an ordinance wonk, so I would like to understand better the criminal trespass to land ordinance. I think our police chief is here, if you could just tell us why that amendment was required.
Absolutely, thank you. As you're aware, many of the local ordinances in our offense section are actually mirror images of state statute. This is, and from time to time, when state statute changes, we come before you to try and change our local ordinance to closely mirror that state statute. This is one ordinance that we have not come to you in some time to change, the state statute has changed quite some time ago now, and what that leaves our officers in this situation of is, when they're dealing with a trespass situation, because of some elements that are lacking in our local ordinance, they are required in many situations, when they write a citation for trespassing, to write a state citation instead of a local ordinance citation. So all we're doing here is moving closer to give that officer the option to do either as appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, thoughts? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the omnibus items as presented.
So moved. Second.
Point of clarification, we have this motion also to approve the final, for final approval, items eight and nine, which are the HBC and BRB resolutions as final approval beyond first reading.
Okay, to verify it's incorporated in this, in this motion, okay. Yes, roll call vote, city clerk. Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay, motion carries. Next agenda business is new business, which is approval of the Second Amendment to the Kemper Sports Management Agreement to be presented by Sally Swarthout, Director of Parks, Recreation and Forestry, City of Lake Forest.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to ask for the approval of the Second Amendment of the Kemper Sports Management Agreement. The Kemper Sports Management Agreement was initially signed in January of 2015. The contract called for a management period of five years with an opportunity to renew for an additional five years after the third anniversary, which was January of 2018. Staff is seeking to, excuse me, extend the contract for the additional five years with an ending date of December 31, 2024. Kemper has brought success to the golf course and the beach concession operation, and staff feels continuing the partnership is in the best interest of the city at this time. Their success stories have been large, and they have included an overall outstanding customer service to our guests at the golf course, as well as at the beach. They have provided outstanding course conditions at Deerpath Golf Course. They've increased the utilization of the golf course. Currently, the utilization rate is 94%, which is an 11% increase year over year. Our rounds have increased by 9%, and we've had increases in outings, permanent tee times, daily play, clinics, community events, banquets, pretty much everything we've asked them to do. They utilize dynamic pricing to drive the revenue at peak usage time, and they've also provided some expanded city services to us as in-the-beach concessions. We asked them to come down and take over that concession stand, and they came in last summer and provided consistent hours, as well as great customer service to the patrons at the beach, which then increased the sales of food and beverage. So as you can see, we've had quite a successful relationship with Kemper to this point. Kemper and the city staff have agreed to the following changes, which are reflected in the Second Amendment, which has been included in your packet this evening. They include changes to Section 2.2, the term, and it reflects the new termination date, as well as the opportunity to terminate the agreement with 90 days' notice after the seventh anniversary of the commencement date, which would be January of 2022. Should no notice be given, the term of the agreement shall automatically be renewed for an additional five years. The second change is to Section 3.41 of the operating budget, and this change was provided to allow for budget development that would actually better reflect the city calendar, so we could marry the two, and Kemper could hit their deadlines. The former paragraph sort of asked them for things a little bit ahead of the game. 3.6 is food and beverage concessions, and that change is a smaller change that allows for the opening and closing dates of the beach concessions to be determined by the Director of Parks, Recreation and Forestry. Additionally, a paragraph was added that allows the two parties to annually discuss in good faith the accounting reimbursement, and whether to have Kemper continue to handle the financial affairs of the property from the home office. Staff will be measuring the capabilities of our new ERP system and how to best manage golf funds now that it's in place, and we would like that opportunity to have that discussion with Kemper on an annual basis. And finally, a sentence has been added to ensure that as otherwise specifically modified in the Second Agreement, all other provisions of the Kemper Sports Management Agreement shall remain in full force and effect. So in consideration of these changes, staff is asking for the approval of the Second Amendment to the Kemper Sports Management Agreement.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Certainly, the evolution of the golf course is wonderful to see.
It is.
We were out there Saturday morning for the groundbreaking ceremony for the new halfway house, which is wonderfully designed, very practical and thoughtful, and clearly, the team effort of the Parks and Rec Department, some council members, Tim Newman, Prue Beidler, and specifically, and Kemper Sports Management, which is a national golf management organization based nearby, and I see there's some of the senior management, in fact, the most senior manager of Kemper Sports Management is in the audience tonight, and there's nothing like having local content and home cooking to make sure our little golf course gets very good attention, but beyond that, it's in fact happening there.
Yes.
It's absolutely terrific, and I sometimes refer to Tim Newman as the godfather of the golf course.
That's a reach.
I know.
But thank you. It was probably a little more than five years ago when we kicked off the master plan update over at the senior center, West Lake Forest, and I think Bob and I are probably the only two left from that meeting. There was a lot of controversy surrounding the possibility of farming out management of our beloved course to an outside management company, and now, five years later, I think everybody's really back in love with Kemper, so I extend my compliments to Steve Skinner and his staff, to General Manager Vince Suarez, to the city staff, Sally, Chuck, I mean, all these people have really worked hard to create this renaissance of a golf course right here in Lake Forest. If you haven't played, please try to do so next year. There's a terrific patio and tent, it's just a lovely little enclave for golf, and I especially have high praise for Sally and the work she's done, so.
Here, here, here. Now, I understand, we have in the audience an enthusiastic user of the golf course, potentially even the, are you the course champion now, Gail?
Runner-up.
Runner-up.
That's good enough.
Wow.
Do you have anything you'd like to say, Gail? Please, come forward. Please, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am a, I'm Gail Stringer Wayne. I live here in Lake Forest. I am a second-generation, longtime, active member of Deer Path Golf Course, and I want to share that this course has never been better or more user-friendly in my 20-plus years of being there. I want to give a special shout-out to Vince Suarez, who is the general manager, Craig Frankie, who is the head golf pro, Brian, I wish I knew his last name, the green, the groundskeeper, greenskeeper, he is amazing, he's a magician. Chef Z, the new chef that they have at the course, is just been wonderful with very unusual, wonderful, delicious offerings. The starters that are there, the gentlemen that are the starters, the staff, everyone who is associated with the golf course is professional, courteous, accommodating, and I give a lot of credit to Steve Skinner of Kemper and his management team. And Dean, you've got the right people at the right place. The grounds have never played better with the improved drainage, the turf and green repair, and I know that is in large measure thanks to the city council and Sally and Kemper working together to provide the support and the funding, which was desperately needed. And I will say, with the rain that we had in one of our leagues, we lost nine playdays this year because of the rain. The addition of the cart path has been genius in, in making golf available for those people who do need to take a cart so that they can play on what would otherwise be rain-soaked green, fairways and roths and things. And Vince, I know, has done an outstanding job of marketing. There's always activity, always very vibrant outings going there. I just want to say quite simply that Kemper Sports has really transformed the culture at Deer Path in, in only positive ways, that, that quite frankly, it gives a country-club feel, a country-club experience to a municipal course. So I too would, would echo Sally's request that you all extend the second amendment. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Alderman Beidler.
I know we actually have something official to do in terms of a vote, but I, Gail, thank you, that was eloquent, and I just can't, the fundraiser in me can't not use this moment to say, in fact, as fabulous as the, as the, as the course is, and, and I have to say, we're working on this public-private partnership, which I think everybody knows about, and we are very much in the middle of it. I mean, there, there, there are definitely projects yet to do. It's great that we've broken ground on the halfway house, which has long been desired, but we are putting up a new cart bar. It needs to be put up before we have a new fleet of carts next year, and this is something you can take, you can, you could go right online right now, any of you who are at home could go online right this minute, and, and, and go to, Sally, the best way, remind everyone?
DeerPathGolf.com or friends.
Okay, DeerPathGolf.com, and, and you'll see, you know, there's, there's a linkage, it's a secure site, you can, you can make a commitment, it's a three-year pledge period if you, if you do it this year, because then we will be finishing in the end of '20. But we continue to need help, so things are fabulous, but they're going to be even better, and we need the community's help to do that. Thank you.
Sally's putting together a, a much wider snail mail and email campaign that'll be going out very soon, so people around town be on the lookout for either an email or a piece in your, in your regular mail to get that donation here before the end of the year.
Wonderful, wonderful. Any other comments from council? Any other comment from the audience regarding this? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the second amendment to the Kemper Sports Management Agreement. To move.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our last agenda item is additional items for discussion, comments by council members, Prue Beidler regarding Welcome Home.
Thank you, thank you. A number of you have been tracking our Welcome Home campaign, which we kicked off, I think we formally voted on it about two years ago, December of 2016, I think, although we'd been talking about it for a while. You may recall that Mayor Don Schonheider cooked this up. I think he and Bob talked about what, something concrete that could be done. We had not done a formal, a formal marketing campaign before of this sort, and we decided to give it a go. Represented here tonight, besides myself representing the city council, are Susan Banks, our communications director, Deb Fisher, who is a, who is a bravura realtor in town. She's, she's going to be available to answer any questions we have about our, our experience with that. And Phil Gator has done, brainstorming, has just done some phenomenal materials for us, has been an integral part of the campaign. Just to remind you, the goals of the Welcome Home campaign, to promote the city and its assets, to attract new residents, young families, students, businesses, visitors, shoppers and diners. So clearly, it was in conversation with local realtors that this got going, but our, our goal, obviously, we, we care a lot about people moving to Lake Forest, there's no question, but we want people to experience the other benefits of being here, the shopping, the dining, the wonderful open spaces and so on. So the wonderful, one of the most wonderful parts about this is, we have not had to make anything up. There's been no spinning. We just have been trying to tell more people all of the wonderful things that we know are, are, are true here. A second piece of this, the encour, to encourage current residents and business owners, employers to act as advocates for Lake Forest, we certainly know that people move here because other people say it's a great place to live and raise their families. So more people doing that means more people come. And, and our, I, I think it was a little bit a sense of, let's talk to each other about this, and, and I think, Susan, go on to the next slide, we can talk about our successes. And I would actually say, I feel really strongly that one of our most powerful successes is the, the growth of citizen advocacy, certainly anecdotally in terms of people saying, you know, I've encouraged people to come, here's what I love about the city, here's what I always do to promote the city, and so on. Specifically, there've been 19 print ads, and I might just, I mean, this is awkward on TV, but let me see if I can do this. Our most recent one, Susan, is this one out? Have we seen this one in Sheridan Road? Welcome Home for the Holidays, and you'll recognize this look. This is, this has been our look now for, for a couple of years, and it's, 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 it's a terrific one. We have something really pretty new online, and if you have not experienced our marketing tool, you, so if you go to the city's homepage, right there, you'll see this logo, our Welcome Home logo, and you go into that, you'll get a marketing tool, we're calling it an online brochure for anyone to use and share, and actually, all of our local realtors have it branded for their own firms, so they, you know, they can use it and, without having to go through us, they've got it to give, to, to give to their clients. The wonderful thing about this tool is it covers everything you can think of in time, in town, whether it's, you know, our philanthropic opportunities, it's schools, it's sports, it's everything. It's, it's amazing, and it's interactive, so you can go and find detail while you're, while you're online, and we can change it. So as new things happen, we can update them, and that's been just, just fantastic to have the tool. We're just thrilled with that. Local, out of Conway Park, a number of the corporations also have it branded for them specifically with their logos. Almost 50 ads created for social media promotion and sharing, approximately 20, 200,000 measurable social media reaches, and the films that we have, again, on the Welcome Home, on the city website, have received almost 10,000 views on, oh, and this is on the Enjoy Lake Forest YouTube page. So we feel that, that we've, there's, there's been excitement about this, there's been, I think, confirmation, for those of us who have long been advocates for Lake Forest, it's nice to have it a little bit more specific when we, you know, need to put, need to put the language around it. And I do think the look of what we've been trying to do, and again, I would, I would, I would point out, the, every, every month, you see something in the Sheridan Road, that was the determinant, is the, is the, is the best sort of local resource for us to use because it goes all up and down the North Shore. We're very pleased, and, and again, Phil Gator is here tonight. He only does high-quality work, but we feel like we've gotten the best, and it's, it's been terrific. Just for a moment, and I think, do we have those as well, Susan? These are, okay. Deb, do you want to talk us through these at all? As long as you're the, you're the, you're the expert. So we've tried to, we can't be absolutely sure that positive real estate news is about us, but we don't think we're getting in its way. Tell us how things look.
So basically, you know, part of the reason that we all came together on this was the fact that we felt we were under the radar, and we really were not communicating to enough people about the wonders of Lake Forest and why they should be here. So if you look at, this chart takes you from 2015, January 1 of 2015, to current day, and essentially, this one's looking at total volume, I'm sorry, dollar volume of closed sales, Lake Forest only, single-family only. We started at about 299 million, and, just under 300 million in January of 2015. We peaked this year in March of 2018 at 356, just almost 357 million, and then, you know, we can't totally control the market, but other variables do take place. Right now, we're at about 321 in October of 2015. But I think you can see, you know, substantial movement in the right direction. Some of that drop was, again, when we were asking for more visibility and more of a program, so we were kind of, we started this knowing that we were kind of heading downhill a little bit, but we have gone up since then. And again, we can't attribute it totally to the program, but, you know, we do think that getting the word out and getting the community to be really advocates for our community has helped a lot. The next slide looks at median sales price, which is frequently something that people ask about. We had started again, Janu, this is kind of a three-year thing again, January of 2015, we're looking at 720 as a median sale price. You know, people think that we have very, very high total sale prices, but our medians right now, 720,000 in January of 15. Our peak in probably July of 2017 was 769, and then, right now, we're running about 770 in October of 2018. So, you know, we've kind of been up and down a little bit, but we're getting, you know, we're heading back, and that October one, maybe we're getting up a little higher now, I may have pulled an older number there. But, you know, again, we're heading in the right direction, and again, 2016 and 17 were where we were really, you know, struggling a bit. And then last is months inventory, months' supply of homes for sale, and you want to be low on this graph, so.
This is the right way to be going here, just to be clear.
So, you know, we start, we saw, as realtors, we saw that we were starting that really long-high build, and we didn't want to be going there. So, again, we did hit a peak, and, you know, we started in 2015 at about 8.2 months' supply of inventory, again, single-family only, looking here. We peaked out in about December of 16 at 13.9 months of inventory, and right now, we've whittled that down to 10.9 months in October. So, again, I think we're heading in the right direction, so.
Great, thank you. So we keep track of that, we look at the transfer tax, obviously, and, and the flash reports and so on, any data, any data we can get. Ken, you can't, you can't absolutely be sure of cause, because, as I say, we, we certainly don't think that, that this is getting in the way of house sales, and, and we're excited about that. Looking to the future, numerous other communities have also launched marketing efforts. We don't think any of them have the, the look we do because we're very lucky in having Phil, but you will, you, you, you are already noticing, I'm sure, more print ads for other communities in Sheridan Road Magazine, in fact, some of them have reached out to us to talk about kind of how we decided to do what we're doing. The video and online brochure production, we've definitely had requests to give information about, about how we did that. And it's interesting, we were just, I think, Deb, maybe you and I, Phil, I can't remember if you talked to the woman from the, the National Real Estate Magazine who, who gave us a call, and we were reminding, we were telling her, reminding ourselves that we did do a fair number of focus groups on the beginning of this, so when we were putting together our sort of reasons you want to be in Lake Forest, we asked a lot of different people to tell us what they thought, including Steve Scott, who was here earlier, as a matter of fact, but, but it was, it was really helpful, and so it was, it was great to have that kind of input, and we've recommend, we recommend that to anybody, you know, if you're putting your list together, be sure you ask, ask your, your residents and your users. Looking ahead, now, just to remind you, formally, the, the three-year commitment that we made to this campaign ends in, in April, the end of April next year. That will have been the end of the three-year budgeting period. We will very likely be coming back for, for an extension because we, we think there's some more things yet to do, and I don't know if it'd be three years, but we'll, we'll talk about it then, we'll have more sense later. Strategize, so look, you'll, you'll see our, our plans for the future, strategize with community organizations and businessmen for promotion of the Lake Forest Go app, which I think is being updated, and we'll probably hear about that later, but that is part of what we're working on. Grow relationships with corporations based in Lake Forest, that's been a goal for a while, and we think there's more we can do to drill down on that one. Continue with print and social media ad push, and actually, we've got a, a young woman who is helping us right now with some specific social media initiatives. Continue communications with local realtors, we feel that's our, that's our sweet spot for finding out what's going on. That's, we need, we need to keep that relationship strong. Deb is a great connector for us, but we need to have regular communications with them whenever possible. And something new and different and very exciting, and I'm going to ask Chief Aldorf to just pop up and tell us why we're doing this. Video production for police and fire department professional recruitment, and we're hoping to build on our success in marketing the city to do.
Well, good evening. I think you're all aware that every two years, we undergo a recruitment and testing cycle for new officers, and the fire department's very similar. One of the phenomenon that we've noticed over the last roughly three cycles or six years is a decreasing number of candidates for police positions, and that's something that's happening throughout the country, and certainly, all of our peers in the Chicago area are also dealing with that. So roughly every cycle, as we debrief, my staff and DeChe's staff talk about how do we improve that recruitment effort? And one thing that's come up time and time again is creating a recruitment video, a professional recruitment video, where we can really show off our staff, and we have, obviously, great officers, I know many of you interact with them quite frequently. We're very lucky in that the current younger generation of officers are all very enthusiastic about just this type of, of production, but it's really outside of our skill set, and so that's one of the reasons why I think this would be great for us, because we really don't have another opportunity to, to shoot and edit a professional video on our own.
Good, thanks. And our hope is, we talked about this at our marketing meeting, that the, the kind of thing we do could also be useful. DeChe, I can't remember if we formally mentioned this to you, but we thought, just in general recruiting for the city, we'd like to have the same, I mean, the story, as I said earlier, and I can't stress this enough, that, that it's not spinning, it's, it's informing and sharing and being excited about what we've got here already. And I think that, obviously, for, for, whether it's police officers or, or fire department professionals or, or other people who might want to work for the city, having a consistent message about, about, about who we are and, and why we think we're such a great place to, to visit or work. So it's a similar message. With that, I'm officially done with updating you. You know, I like to talk about this, it's a, it's a, it's, it's been a really interesting and, and I think very positive initiative. I would be, I would answer questions? Anything you want to say?
Just, go ahead.
On the topic of entrepreneurialism, two questions. One, with the comprehensive plan and the work that's happening along the Waukegan Corridor, I wonder if we couldn't connect the dots there? I don't know, maybe we have already begun that process, but I think that could be very interesting. And then thinking back to President Scott and the entrepreneurial effort that's, that's been going on at the college.
Good.
As well as with other entities throughout town, including economic development in general, I, I think that's.
Good.
A topical area that I would encourage move to the front and center. There's so much going on in town, it's amazing, and most people have no idea.
I would agree, I think that's great. Phil, I don't, do we have anything on the tool right now on that subject, on entrepreneurship? That's something we could certainly add. So, I mean, that's the kind of thing that's helpful, and because, because this tool's interactive, we can do so, let's, let's noodle that and think how that might go, or whether it's suitable for an ad or, you know, something. I don't know what season entrepreneurship is, every season, but, but it's something unique, let's do it, let's talk about it. Good.
Happy to be helpful there.
Entrepreneurship is 24/7.
Very much.
To be clear, if, you get to the Welcome Home campaign by going to the city's landing page.
It's right on the front page.
Right there.
It's right there.
For folks to.
Everything you want, the videos are there. Susan, am I right? I don't want to misspeak, but it's right, and every time I go to the city's webpage, it's right there.
Okay, well, thank you. Oh.
I just had a quick comment. I, I found the graphs that.
I found the graphs that you and Deb showed us to be very powerful. And a different message than what's out in the street. I think that folklore out in the street has our average sale prices declining significantly over the last five years and time on the market to be, you know, different than what these graphs are showing. So, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can highlight that a little bit in some of our communications. Susan, maybe it's in a dialogue in the future, taking some of these graphs, making it into a little article on what is really happening.
It's a really good idea.
In our real estate market. Because as real estate goes, so goes the community, you know? I mean, it's a very important industry.
Maybe once a year, because there really is, yeah, the folklore out there is far-ranging.
Really good idea. I'm sure it's been noted. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Any other good suggestions? And they don't have to be just now. And anybody watching at home and the audience, feel free to reach out to us and give us ideas of things. And take a look at that tool, see what's missing. It's been, you know, it's great because we just say, Phil, why don't you update this? And he goes, sure, will do. And, you know, so it's been terrific. It's been a great team to be part of. And our feeling is that there's still more we can keep doing. So, that's what we'll, you'll hear more later on that. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, team.
Good report, good message. With that, that completes our agenda, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
For a second. All those in favor? Opposed, we are...
Wow. This is a record. That is, that is, that might be a record.
So, how painful was this?